Shows also off the Ohio Department of Health at coronavirus.ohio.gov site. It shows the cumulative hospitalizations, the mean age for hospitalization, and there's 87 counties that have at least one hospitalization. So there's still one county out there that has not had a hospitalization yet. It also at the bottom is a slide, is a part of the slide where we keep track of how many people and what the ventilator capacity is. And I know it's a very hard slide to look at from so far away, but the blue would be the COVID patients on that back pop-up. So that's what we're always watching, but then the whole thing is the total capacity. So we want to make sure we're always below what we have, what we're capable of taking in because remember COVID is not the hospitals only job right now. There are many other people that need help for surgeries and heart attacks and et cetera. The current data for Butler County and the city of Hamilton, I last updated this today. The county's count is at 36,000 or 3,613. It's a two-week increase of 338. For the city of Hamilton, we're at 558. There's a two-week increase of 98 cases this last two weeks since I last spoke to you. So hospitalized, there are a total of 336 that have required hospitalization in the county as a whole. We're seeing about two to three hospitalizations per day currently. That's in the current stats. The current data shows the highest positivity rate in the 20- to 34-year-old age group with 3% requiring hospitalization in that group. Overall, those requiring ICU beds are at 42 or 1.3% of our cases, intubation 26.8% of it, and the deaths as a total have been 72 in the county as a whole, and the city's still sitting at the four that I told you about last time. This is a slide that you can pull up off of the state of Ohio site, and I don't know how much anybody has played around with it, but it's also a nice way to see and bring it down to a local level. So if you go to that coronavirus.ohio.gov site, you can actually bring this down to the county level, which is what I've done. So the top number is the hospitalizations. It's the total number of cases hospitalized. And then you can see the day-to-day totals there by the little stick man. So you can see how many are being hospitalized. And like I said, it's right around two to three per day is what we're seeing at the current rate. So hospitalizations, sorry, I'm on cases. So the case count is rising as a whole. For hospitalizations, we've had 336. Those little stick men are hard to see again. We're nowhere near as high as we were back when we had our height back in May. We're seeing again about two to three per day. There's been the 72 deaths. Each one of those little soldiers typically are equal one person. The ones that are taller are higher, show more like five. And I think that was the most we had back in May, were five deaths in one day. Presumed recovered for the county are 2,885. So again, that shows you there's about 728 people currently under isolation in the county that are actively infected. So what is the purpose of quarantine? I wanted to go over this a little bit because I think it's confusing to people. The person who's sick is isolated, and the people around them that have had immediate contact with them are quarantined. So quarantine means you were exposed to someone who tested positive for COVID. An exposure equals 10 to 15 minutes of face-to-face time, less than six feet from them, regardless of whether the fact that you've had a mask on or not. The best-case scenarios are always two people in a mask, six feet apart, or greater. And we don't quarantine people if they're eight feet apart, and even if neither one of them have a mask. So again, it just should highlight that social distancing that we all have to keep in mind. Those are two really important pieces, social distance and mask. Quarantine is meant to prevent further spread of COVID-19. It needs to be age-appropriate quarantine, so an adult and an older child can be kept homebound to themselves in their rooms. Teenagers kind of like that. No one should work unless they're able to work remotely. School-age kids should be kept home and inside the house. They shouldn't be going outside and playing with their friends, and the parents should monitor their wellness. Just because someone's under quarantine and starts showing symptoms of COVID-19 doesn't mean that they have to get tested. Again, it's a decision between you and your doctor, or just if you really want to be tested, but it's not a requirement. It does not, though, end just because you went and got a test, even if it comes back negative, it doesn't end the quarantine period. The quarantine is because the incubation period for COVID-19 is two to 14 days. So we really want the people to stay in for the full 14 days because they could exhibit signs and symptoms. Another thing that's really key, no grandparents or vulnerable population should visit a home that's under quarantine. That's especially important to protect our most vulnerable. Those are people like elders, people with complicating health conditions, diabetes, heart disease, lung disease, asthma, renal and liver disease. It also includes people who are immunocompromised because of medications that they're on. So those people should stay away from someone who is quarantined. Quarantine should last, like I said, for the entire 14 days. That's to cover the incubation period. And you should remain in your home and do not have interactions with the public for the full 14 days regardless of a negative test. I want to highlight that because as we've started school, those are things that become even bigger asks for the public, and I realize that. But I think we can all take, I'm all about lessons learned. And so we can all make lessons from Miami University. I'm not trying to point them out or pick on them in any way, shape, or form, but you know, their football, baseball, and teams themselves, I believe the coaches were doing all the right things at practice. So practice was going as it should be, and then low and behold, the kiddos being away from their parents for the first time, and since probably we started this because they've been home and asked to come home in March, had some parties. And out of those parties, there's currently 125 positive cases, and there's 100 more tests still out there. And that's only the ones that actually went to go get a test. So it just kind of highlights that it's so important that parents help people understand, their kiddos understand that, you know, we can set everything up properly for school and have all the best intentions, but still have a bad result. And I say that because we've just finished two days at Hamilton, and I had an hour-long conversation with the nurses today at the Hamilton City Schools, and they were telling me how wonderful everything went. The freshman school, she said, "You wouldn't believe it." She said, "Plans well laid. Everyone was respectful. They were wearing their masks as they were supposed to, over their nose and their mouth, not on top of their head and under their chin." And she said that it was amazing. And they said, even in the elementary schools, there were a couple of needing to remind people not to bunch up in line because they've got everything mapped out for their mass breaks. There's Xs in the hallway where they're supposed to stand, so they're at least six feet apart, so they can remove their mask and have a break. And the younger kiddos like to bunch up because they've always been told, "Stay in line, stay in line, you know, keep up, you got to keep up." So it's kind of relearning a different mentality for them. But they said everything went super well. So A through, what is it, L that went? Kudos to them, and we're looking forward to the next two days. But we really do, if you want to get into this school year and continue, we've got to do it outside of school, too, because if the parents only have those things happening during school, but let their kids have slumber parties and, you know, big get-togethers, we're going to be fighting a battle that I'm not sure we can win. So that's just my input on that. Any questions from anyone?
Questions? Thank you again for your very informative presentation. Okay, we next, next go to audience citizens, as we are not open yet to the public, even the city building itself is not. You're still able to be an audience citizen, but you must speak regarding a specific agenda item or in-person comment. And I was going to ask, we have an in-person. I advise I would go ahead and do the these four, since there is something on the agenda, and make a comment about Mr. Latimer. Is that please? Yes. I'll do those comments, I think it's before agenda item 17. Let's do those. For the record, we do have, I believe, the six total comments. Okay. Four have to do with agenda item number 17, which has to do with the Main Street development. I'd like to wait for those to be read at that time before we go to agenda item number 17. At least, and Mayor's going to comment, too, about that one before we go to agenda 17. One had to do with railroads, railroad crossings, and I think that's Mr. Latimer out there. I saw Mr. Latimer. He knows that whenever he does bring up an issue that we do have, Mr. Engel will take a look at it specifically, usually, and it'll be looked into. So if you're out there, Jim, outside the hallway, thank you very much for giving us some ideas of what's going on with the railroad crossings. The last and sixth one has to do with a comment about the United States Postal Service. I think we can go ahead and make that one be next week. Mr. City Clerk, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Or not next week, but two weeks. So there are none to go into because we'll do the post office one September the 9th. Mr. Latimer, we've already addressed. Another one's will be addressed before agenda item number 17. Can I take care of them?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go right into the agenda itself. First thing we have is the consent agenda, and that covers approval of minutes, staff reports, receiving and filing information, caucus reports, and our July informational reports. Usually, we have a committee of the whole, but since the virus situation's going on, we have not had people in here, the city administration, going over a lot of these things in detail. We've been given staff reports on them, but to keep this room less populated, we don't go to committee of the whole. We will soon, we hope. The caucus agenda has five, I believe, planning items, as well as something in relation to a local job creation tax credit. So is there a motion about the caucus agenda?
So moved. Second.
And that motion is, council received the reports of the consent agenda, which includes the caucus agenda, and concurrent recommendations. That's the first, by a motion made by Councilmember Brown, sent by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. Can we now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items? Now, set the motion, this time regarding our legislative items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, sent by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation, agenda item number two, second reading of ordinance involving conditional use in a self-storage facility.
In ordinance approving a request for conditional use approval to expand an existing self-storage facility at 1010 Cleveland Avenue located in I-1 limited industrial zoning district situated in the first ward, city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, sent by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion about this agenda item? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number three, second reading of an ordinance involving conditional use automotive service business.
In ordinance approving request for conditional use certificate to operate an automotive service and minor repair business at 3,000 Dixie Highway, property zoned I-1 limited industrial zoning district situated in Sixth Ward, city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, sent by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion on this one? I just want to say, a lot of the agenda items tonight, and this one, this shows how thorough our planning department is. There were 15 conditions of approval on this. So I just want to thank the planning commission, and we all thank the planning commission, which Dan, you're one of, for having such a, doing their job so thoroughly and working so hard. Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call vote on three.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
On the planning department, not planning commission, which does work well. Agenda item number four, second reading of an ordinance involving vacating a portion of Arch Street Alley.
In ordinance vacating a portion of Arch Street Alley A located between South C Street and South D Street situated in the first ward, south side, city of Hamilton, Ohio, city of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, sent by Councilmember Fear. Discussion, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number five, second reading of an ordinance involving side lot, 122 Progress Avenue.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners' side lot, 122 Progress Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, sent by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion or comments on this one? For the record, you do see the city lot on the screen for all of these particular votes that have to do with property in the city of Hamilton. So any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Agenda item number six, second reading of an ordinance involving side lot, 242 Walnut Street.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners' side lot, parcel number P6421011000082 located adjacent to 242 Walnut Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, sent by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number seven, second reading of an ordinance involving 246 Walnut Street.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners' side lot, 246 Walnut Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, sent by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this? Take a look at the, what's on the screen. Most of these lots are in the middle of blocks, so this kind of makes sense to what we're doing. Again, we thank staff for working so hard on these. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number eight, second reading of an ordinance involving side lot, 420 Chestnut Street.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners' side lot, 420 Chestnut Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, sent by Councilmember Fear. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number nine, second reading of an ordinance involving side lot, 463 South Fourth Street.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to adjoining property owners' side lot, 463 South Fourth Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, sent by Councilmember Ryan. Comments or discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving side lot, conveyance 600 South McKinley Avenue.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owner as a side lot, 600 South McKinley Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, sent by Councilmember Brown. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
The second reading of an ordinance involving some vehicle ordinances?
In ordinance amending and supplementing Part III Traffic Code, repealing Section 301.20 motor vehicle, adding Section 301.301 recreational vehicle, and amending Section 301.51 vehicle of Chapter 301, definitions of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, sent by Councilmember Ryan. Question, comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call?
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number 12, second reading of an ordinance also involving vehicles.
In ordinance amending and supplementing Part III Traffic Code, Chapter 351 Parking Generally, Section 351.03 and subsection A, prohibited standing or parking places, Section 351.03.1, prohibited standing and parking of certain trucks and buses and all semi-trailers and semi-tractors in a residence district. Exceptions, Section 351.17, no parking of vehicles and yards, and Section 351.99A3, penalty of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, sent by Councilmember Fear. Any comments amongst council? Hearing none, roll call?
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number 13, second reading of an ordinance also involving vehicles.
In ordinance amending and supplementing Part III Traffic Code, Chapter 355 Junk and Abandoned Vehicles, Section 355.01 through 355.05 of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, sent by Councilmember Nab. Any comment? Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 14, which involves second reading of an ordinance also involving vehicles.
In ordinance amending and supplementing Part 17 Health Code, Chapter 1735 Littering, Section 1735.18, Maintaining Private Property Free of Litter, Section 1735.20 Effective Noncompliance, City May Remove Violation, and Section 1735.22 Junk Motor Vehicles on Private Property With Permission of Owner, Notice of Removal and Impounding, the Codified Ordnances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, sent by Councilmember Brown. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
And we go to agenda item number 15, no ordinance, second reading involving license application requirements.
In ordinance amending and supplementing Section 753.03 of Chapter 753 of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio regarding license application requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ryan, sent by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments on this? This has to do with solicitors primarily. So any other comments? Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7:0.
Go to agenda item number 16, second reading of an ordinance involving outdoor burning and refuse burning.
In ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Part 15 Fire Prevention Code relative to adding Section 1505.03 General Provision on Outdoor Burning and Refuse Burning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Fear. Questions, comments? I know I asked Chief Mercer last time to summarize it. According to where I read, the flames can be no, like, three feet in diameter, two feet in height, 25 feet away from a building, 18 years old. By our experience, those are some of the key terms of that particular legislation. Any other questions or comments about agenda item number 16? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Orin stopped at seven zero.
Then item number 17, the second reading of an ordinance involving development agreement related to 320 Main Street, Hamilton, Ohio. So, you want to start off with your presentation, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. It's more of a, just a couple of general comments and taking any questions council may have. At the last council meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about the duplex that was located immediately to the west of the Davis Building, and the Davis Building, just for reference, is the building that has Village Parlor Ice Cream in it. Since the time, since the last council meeting, thank you, Nick has the building on the screen now, I've had several conversations with the developer, with the developer's architect, with some other folks in the media area. If council approves the development agreement tonight, that in no way indicates that you are for or against the demolition of the duplex. I've told the developer that it's my intent to continue to work with him and the architect in finding a way to preserve it. I truly believe that there are a couple of options with doing that. But a couple of key pieces of the development agreement that I think that you need to contemplate as you determine your vote tonight. What is being proposed is a minimum 50-unit apartment complex that will require 75 off-street parking spaces. The current construction estimate is between $6 and $7 million. The proposal, at least within the development agreement, is that the developer would acquire the property the city and the CIC owns for no more than $100. The city would provide a one-time development incentive of $75,000. The purposes of that development incentive is many-fold. There's some demolition that needs to happen, I guess possibly demolition. You have a substantial amount of site work, there's some geotechnical borings that need to be taken, that need to take place, an ALTA survey needs to be performed, relocation of overhead utility lines. So during the negotiation process, instead of agreeing to do certain things, we worked with the developer's attorney to just cap it at $75,000. We got budget estimates for a variety of things. We felt like everything could be performed for about that amount, but that way, if there's anything found underground, as an example, we would be capped at 75, and any additional work would have to be performed by the developer. It would receive a 15-year tax abatement, which is the same deal that was provided to the same developer for the Markham Mixed Juice Project in downtown Hamilton. And just going back to what we talked about at the last meeting, what, the primary purpose for the project really is creating residential density to support the new restaurants, the new businesses that are looking on Main Street to make them viable. So that is why we have been so interested in getting an apartment complex, a market-rate apartment complex of a significant size, so we could help the retailers and the businesses and keep them hopefully moving in a positive fashion. So again, the duplex that's on the screen, in no way are you indicating that you support or do not support the demolition of that in this agreement. The development agreement contemplates a 90-day due diligence period by the developer, and frankly, if we don't agree to do certain things, he could walk away, and we can walk away. But this, what, what the development agreement truly does tonight is triggers the start to his due diligence phase for the next 90 days. It is my intent to come back to council sometime in September, I'm not sure if it was the first meeting in September, but hopefully no later than the second meeting, with an update on what the development would look like. Hopefully, we can say that we saved the duplex, and in exchange for saving the duplex, we will show you, you know, how that would work. Would that mean maybe an additional floor of elevation, maybe instead of going four stories, it's a five-story building, maybe the building is a little bit deeper. They're running out multiple scenarios right now. The only problem with running the building deeper, if you will, is that then you lose parking on the backside of the property. And he is very sensitive of having 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which is the industry average. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Before we read the emails, which will happen next, can you put up on the screen the one that's had the pink and the blue, basically, the red and the blue? So the parcels that would be developed are in the blue as well as that pink, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And is the pink owned by an individual, or what?
No, the, all the, all the property that's being contemplated is either owned through the CIC or through the City of Hamilton.
So that building next to that vacant lot is owned by the city also?
There are no buildings on any of those lots, those are maybe an old aerial photo.
Oh, okay.
But the only, so if you can see the, the building that does not have a color on it, that's the next one west, the one that has like the brick commercial storefront on it, that's.
The one that has like the little bay, oh, yeah, that one.
That one. So that, so if Nick goes back to the aerial photo, the first photo without a color is that building.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep, so there used to be two smaller homes that were demolished, I would say, in like the last three years or so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Sorry, I had a question about parking. So where would you enter for the parking? You said it's in the back, so would it come off of Main Street, or?
It would not come off of the Main Street, you would access it on either D or E Street through the alley.
Okay.
So the, the alley that's perpendicular to D Street.
And the alley would accommodate 100 spots or whatever, 75?
It would not.
Okay.
So part of, the part of his due diligence is assembling enough parking spaces to get to his 75.
But the alleyway would carry that, I mean, that's.
Oh, absolutely.
Way, or is it a one-way? I believe it might be a one-way.
I have seen cars going two ways on the alleys before in the, in the Main Street area, but I think they are truly meant for one-way traffic, yes.
And would that impact other residents anywhere along there?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Now, the farthest right, blue covered, so to speak, building, that's the duplex.
That is correct.
And that's owned by the CIC at this time.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I think for everybody that's watching, I've had questions on this, that a lot of people think that you're gonna have 50 units of really cheap apartments, and I would like you to explain what actually they will look like. I mean, they're, they're not gonna be cheap apartments.
If the city clerk would indulge me, could you come out of this presentation and go to the core website, specifically to the Davis Building Apartments? So the development agreement that's included within your council packet tonight specifically references that the minimum standards for the new apartments will have to be similar or better than what was constructed at the Davis Apartments. And I'll show you the interior photos of those here momentarily on the screen. So the kitchen that you would see in a photo like that pursuant to the development agreement that is included in your packet, it specifically says that is the minimum requirement. So it cannot be any lower grade than what you see in these photos. And from what the developers indicated to us, he believes it will be a step up from the Davis Building Apartments. I think the Davis Building Apartments turned out very nice, I know several people that live there are very happy with the quality of the construction. But yes, I mean, that, that would be the, the finishes that you would see, if not better finishes, in the new apartments.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Fire suppression?
Yes.
You're gonna have it?
Whatever the building codes require, we'll have it.
Okay. City manager, would the floor plans be about the same size as the Davis?
I believe that you would, you would see slightly larger units at the apartments that Mr. Cohen would construct. The Davis Building, obviously being a historic building, was somewhat restricted to some smaller-sized apartments. I would believe that you would see a larger, for the most part, larger floor plans.
And there would be no retail, no commercial on the first floor?
There would not.
Or on any floor?
On any floor, no. This would be simply a, the current plan, unless it changes due to the duplex, would be a four-story, minimum 50-unit apartment complex.
I believe it's been, I think as-is, I saw in the development agreement, as-is?
Yes.
Is the Davis Building four stories?
Davis Building is, I want to say it's three stories, three stories.
And there's no regulation regarding five on Main Street? I don't know what the tallest building on Main Street might be.
It is not, and I can tell you the developer does not want to go five stories because it changes the nature of the building code when you go from four to five stories. You can see the Davis Building has a pretty significant parapet wall on the top, which gives it some additional height, but the developer is doing everything possible to keep it at four stories or less.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Clerk, will you please read the emails that came in involving this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And then again, for the screen purposes, you can see on the updated Google Maps that those buildings are not there, and that the area shown in pink earlier indicated the property owned by the city, the blue wasn't by the CIC. I'm going to read this into the record before I read the emails into the record. We did not actually read 17 into it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. In ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions with Miami Street Hamilton Apartments LLC relating to 320 Main Street, Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor. Should we do that now?
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, why don't we do this? Because if our citizens, they would have spoken before, there would have been a motion. Go ahead, go ahead and.
Read the emails, if you would.
Sure.
I think this makes sense to do it that way.
First email regarding agenda item number 17. Dear Mayor, Mayor Mueller and council members, I'd like to express my support for the development of a 50-unit apartment building and the resulting demolition of the historic property located at 310 Main Street. While the building located at 310 Main Street does have a nice facade and appears sturdy, I do not believe the building, on this merit alone, should stand in the way of needing downtown housing. As we've witnessed over the past several years, nice downtown housing begets foot traffic, foot traffic begets retail, and in entertainment, which in turn begets a desirable community to both live and work. Hamilton is now attracting industry and larger employers, which will help our city sustain its recent successes. We need to continue our progress. Downtown housing is in large demand, and now is an ideal time to see a development of this size at the Main Street location of our downtown. My assumption is that new housing development will blend in well with the surrounding historic properties and one that Hamiltonians can be proud of. While we are losing sturdy, nice building, i.e. 310 Main Street, my hopes are that the new structure will be even more attractive and will be staying for Hamiltonians 100 years from now. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Tim Meehan, 856 North Lawn Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio 45013. This next one is from Brittany Dudley, 304 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011. Good morning. I saw the Journal article about citizens voicing their concern about tearing down 310 Main Street in Hamilton. I would like to voice my opinion in support of Jim Cohen and his request to tear that residence down. His work building and managing the Markham Apartment Development has brought fresh life to my part of Hamilton, and I hope just across the river can have the same influx of life. In addition, I live next door to a courthouse that also had difficulty selling due to the high cost of rehabbing it. Now it is vacant and occasionally gets broken in two. Now it is vacant and occasionally gets broken in two. We gave our citizens many years to buy and rehab these houses, but no one has been interested, so we should use the space for something that our residents will, in the year 2020, can get the most use from. Phil Thayer. Hello, Nick. I know there are several people, including myself, who have reached out to the city's Economic Development Department about the above duplex at 310 Main Street, people who might be interested in purchasing it to restore it as opposed to tearing it down. I wanted to let this be known before the next council meeting. Thank you. Phil Thayer. And then I believe this is the follow-up that Mr. Thayer spoke of. This is actually from the Chaps Butler County Organization. Their address is butlerchaps@gmail.com. Dear Mr. Groukis, enclosed are signatures for a petition related to item number 17 on this evening's council agenda. At this time, you will note that a petition has garnered almost 400 signatures, most from Hamilton residents. The text of the petition reads as follows. We plead for your creativity to accommodate the new apartment development proposed for the 300 block of Main Street while preserving the historic double standing at 310-312 Main Street. This home, with Tudor revival and craftsmen styling, has stood since 1911 and is a key piece of historic fabric of Main Street and the Rossville Historic District. Some have called this home obsolete and said that it's not what people want today. While historic home may not be for everyone, historic homes and neighborhoods are in high demand across the country. Hamilton's revitalization has been partially driven by residents reoccupying older buildings, either in the upper floors of commercial buildings like the Arts Space Lofts or Davis Apartments, or by, more by buying historic homes in German Village, Dayton Lane, Prospect Hill, Lindenwall, and the other core neighborhoods. Many demographic groups, from young professionals to empty nesters, appreciate the authenticity and walkability of historic neighborhoods. Others have questioned if this home can come to still serve a residential purpose with an apartment building next door blocking air and light. Although commercial use may be a creative and acceptable way to reuse the building, residential will be no less viable with the new apartment building. Look to Cincinnati's Over the Rhine, or even Hamilton's Mercantile Lofts, or for examples of high-demand residential in urban contexts where windows and light may be limited. 310 will always have more light than traditional rowhouse or townhome that share a common wall. Hamilton's revitalization has been built on preserving its unique character. This, how to save a massive paper mill, we can figure out how to save a historic home. Please save 310 Main Street. Respectfully, Citizens for Historic and Preservation Services. Attached to that email was there a copy of the petition from change.org. I will spare council the detail of reading the 400 names. But having, looking at it, and we'll give council a copy, I can verify that a large number of the signatures are coming from the Hamilton, Ohio, area, either that being the city or Fairfield or surrounding areas, and then the minority coming from other parts of the United States. That is all the comments for this issue.
For the four emails that you received. I think there's four, you said, correct? Shoot back, Mr. Thayer.
Yes.
All right. City Manager, do you want to comment about that?
I do. Just a couple of quick thoughts as I was listening to Nick read through some of the comments that he received. I met with Chaps several years ago. If you recall, the apartment, it used to be a six-unit apartment complex on South B Street. So when you came off of the ramp, if you're heading towards Park, it sat right there on the river. And Chaps, it was a Saturday morning, we met over at the Butler County Historical Society. They were upset about the proposed demolition of that, of that structure, which I understood. I, it was, I thought it was a neat-looking six-unit apartment and it did have riverfront access. But as I explained to him at that Saturday morning meeting, it was lose the battle, win a war. The war was Spooky Nook and preserving the Champion Paper Mill, which was the objective that the city was trying to achieve. And everyone's already talking about traffic associated with Spooky Nook and how that's going to function once that's operational. And our traffic engineers are saying if we could add a slip lane at that location, that would really ease traffic going to the site, especially when you have a lot of cars coming in, say for like a Friday night during a tournament weekend. And even though, I mean, I fully understood their argument about that six-unit, what was truly important was saving over a half a million square feet of existing Champion Paper space. And in this case, I certainly hear the argument loud and clear. I do believe that building is worth saving. And council has my promise, I am doing everything in my power right now through multiple avenues to see if we can preserve it. I think it would be neat. The one thing Nick did read, and it was not something I had thought of, but it's accurate, where they said if you live in a townhouse, a lot of cases, if you are in a townhouse, you do have a common wall with someone, so you don't have windows on either side. And that's something I did not think of when I was, when I was speaking at the last council meeting. I think it's a very good point. So all that said, I'm hoping, as I said, to bring back an update, if not at the first, but the second meeting of council in September, with some creative ideas on how we can preserve that duplex while still accomplishing what we need to accomplish, which in my mind is that 50-plus unit apartment complex. Thank you, Mayor.
So we've had a email, comments, presentation from the city manager. Are there motions at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to be Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any comments by council at this time? I just want to say that I hope it's, the option of keeping that is looked into. It could add to the character of that particular block in kind of a neat way, if it could be, could be kept and built around it. All right. Any other comments from council, because we've got a first and a second?
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
That can only be a residence, right? That cannot be a business?
No, it certainly could be a business.
Could be a business.
Yes.
But with ADA, because I don't really see any way to get in, like all the other stores are storefront without the steps.
Well, if you look at the scripted studio to the side, that has steps leading into it. And also, you would have the ability to put a ramp into the back of it if that was a requirement. I'm not fully versed in all the building codes, but I'm certain that it could be a commercial business, or residence, or it could be a mixed-use building.
Mixed-use, that's my next question. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Actually, I do have one more question. If we can pan over to the other building that's off to the west there, that one over there with the, is there a way to acquire that building, get rid of that one, and keep the other one? I mean, is that, I mean, it seems like that's going to give us more room. You're smiling because hopefully that's a way to look at it, but...
I was trying not to sneeze, but...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you, I'm thinking that's about the same amount of land, almost, we could acquire that or find a way to get Cohen to acquire that.
I will, I will provide a council a detailed memorandum of different options that we have.
Okay. Because I, I kind of would like to see that happen, so. All right.
Any other comments or questions? We've got a first and a second. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Okay. We now go to Agenda Item Number 18, second reading of emergency ordinance involving some bonds.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable economic development refund revenue bond, Series 2020, of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, in the maximum principal amount of $31,900,000 to provide funds for the purpose of refinancing costs of various capital improvements to the Champion Mill Site project, and financing grants to acquire, rehabilitate, improve, and develop other real property within the city. Providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such bonds, authorizing certificate of award, a bond purchase agreement, an escrow agreement, an official statement, a continuing disclosure agreement, and authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Questions, comments about this?
Mayor, I do have a comment, if I may.
Please, if you would.
I did talk to Andy Brosard, our financial advisor today, about the market. If this goes through, bonds probably be priced sometime in the next seven to 10 business days. We're looking at very favorable rates right now at a fixed 30-year, so I mean, the time is certainly right to go to market.
So it would be a fixed rate? Our original plan with this bond was to turn it into a 30-year?
Yes, from the very beginning. If you recall, when COVID hit, the municipal bond market went haywire. We were able, Key Bank was great and gave us a five-year note to buy us some time to figure out what our options were going to be, but things stabilized a lot more quickly than what we thought. And the 30-year market is very good. We had a, we had a ratings call with Standard &amp; Poor in the last 10 days. That went very well, so we're moving into then, assuming this gets approved tonight, then we'll be moving into a sale sometime in the next seven to 10 business days.
Any other comments or questions? We've got a first and a second. If there's no other comments, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number 19, pursuing of ordinance involving Plan Hamilton and the North End Corridor Revitalization Plan.
In ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan adding the North End Corridor Revitalization Plan to the plan, City of Hamilton applicant.
You. Go to Agenda Item Number 20, two reads of emergency ordinance involving a purchase and sale agreement, 335 and 339 Main Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 335 and 339 Main Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45013, Ritzy Body Shop Incorporated and Ritzy Holdings, LTD owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time vice title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Brown. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 335 and 339 Main Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45013, Ritzy Body Shop Incorporated and Ritzy Holdings, LTD owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Brown. Discussion or comments on this one? Record, this is the Ritzy property on Main Street.
Correct.
And it's shown up on the screen right now as an exhibit to our staff report. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 21, resolution involving CRA agreement.
A resolution authorizing directing the execution of community reinvestment area agreement with Hamilton High Holdings, LLC.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Fear, second by Councilmember Nab. Any comments or questions about this particular resolution? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 22, resolution involving side lots and a land bank.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as side lot. 1325 Allstater Avenue, 141, 143, and 147 Chestnut Street, 422 Pershing Avenue, 1115 Ross Avenue, 1126 Ross Avenue, and P6412013000011, located adjacent to 1126 Ross Avenue, 512 South Fourth Street, 123 Wilson Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Ryan, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Discussion or comments on this? This record, this appears to be a way of making this product start to go a little bit smoother, doing things as a group, and also, the next round will probably be going through quicker than these side lots. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions regarding this conveyance? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 23, resolution involving conveyance of real property involving the side lots.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property located with the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to adjoining property owners as side lot. 417 Charles Street, 750 Milliken Street, 906 South Front Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion, comment? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 24, resolution involving leases of certain real property as side lots.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as side lots. 3 Booth Avenue, 1224 Greenwood Avenue, 424 North Seventh Street, and P6431017000039, and P643101700049, located adjacent to 424 North Seventh Street, 1114 Reservoir Street, 621 Vine Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 25, in leases of certain real property involving side lots.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as side lots. 1215 Long Street, 1228 Long Street, 636 South 11th Street, 704 South 9th Street, 427 South 13th Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 26, also leases of property involving side lots.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as side lots. 864 Central Avenue, 1215 Grand Boulevard, 1225 Grand Boulevard, and P6451034000035, located adjacent to 1225 Grand Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion or comment? I do notice there are some leases and there's some actual conveyances. And I do hope at some point in time, if the property owner who is leasing, if he owns that property, at some point in time, things could possibly change and it could be deeded to that individual. I know there's various strategic issues involving these lots, but I just, in some other cases, I just think that the owner, their true owner, should be able to get the property. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number 27, resolution involving side lot 530 North Fifth.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to adjoining property owner as a side lot, 530 North Fifth Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay. Now go to Agenda Item Number 28, resolution involving a grant application with ODOT.
A resolution authorizing directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT Municipal Bridge Program for Bill Stein Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan.